Council Meeting of November 8th, 2021. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing by such person or group unless that address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to that item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Today is an open microphone session. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business for today's council meeting for Monday, November 8th, 2021 is our Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Chairman Bowers, it's wonderful to be here today to celebrate the Mayor's Award of Excellence. We're going to celebrate it three times. We have three different awards for three different months earlier this year, and all three go to different members of the Lincoln Police Department. So we're looking at February, March, and April of 2021. Mayor's Award of Excellence for February 2021 is presented to investigator Chris Milicitz. He was nominated by Sergeant Ken Kojal in the categories of customer relations and productivity for his hard work in helping to solve a homicide. The case involved the shooting death of a 15-year-old boy in September 2019, and the investigation continued into 2021. As the lead investigator, Milicitz unraveled a complicated case that involved a planned home robbery invasion, arrests for drug and firearm violations, analysis of phones and phone records, DNA analysis, a recreation of the shooting incident, and 200 separate items of evidence. Sergeant Kojal wrote that Milicitz coordinated with other officers during the investigation, including the Narcotics Union. He credited Milicitz's patience, creativity, and leadership with solving the case. He also wrote that the officer was a calming influence with the family of the victim, who understandably wanted immediate results during what was, of course, a lengthy investigation. So I hope you will please join me in congratulating and thanking investigator Chris Milicitz for his hard work and commitment to the city of Lincoln. Come on up, Chris. Assistant Chief Brian Jackson would like to come forward to say a few words, and then after that, we'll ask you if you'd like to say anything while you're here.
Assistant Chief Brian Jackson, again, it's my honor to represent the Lincoln Police Department in the place of the chief who is unable to attend today. Again, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for hosting this award and the council for participating in it and giving us time to represent and recognize our employees. It was pointed out to me, my Mondays would be much freer if it wasn't for the quality of staff that we have and the times we have to come to recognize, but there's nothing I would rather do than to come and recognize the hard work of our people. Chris has been in our investigative unit for quite a while, and while he's an investigator, he's a leader, and he represents the best of what we have. And whenever a homicide is one of the most terrible crimes that we can have in our community, and the impact is felt across many different layers, and Chris has done an excellent job as well as the unit he works with, and I'm sure Chris would be first to say, it is often a team effort that gets the results, but it takes leaders like Chris to facilitate, to direct, and to guide the investigation to the conclusions that we are seeing, and those conclusions are clearances and arrests and convictions. And Chris is an excellent example of that, and I'm proud that he's in our investigative unit, and I think our investigative unit, many of our here today, is one of the best investigative units, if not in the Midwest and the nation, for what they do and the resources they have to accomplish. And I wanted to say thank you very much, Chris, and you did a great job.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you to the City Council. Thank you, Mayor, for having me and recognizing this award today. I'll keep this brief because I know you have two others coming up, but I would also like to thank my supervisor, Ken Kojal, who nominated me for this award, Captain Booker, who was the captain of our unit, and couldn't have two better leaders run in a unit like we have. Also, like the mayor said in the letter that Kojal wrote, this was a team effort. It always is when we have major cases like this going on at one time. We got help from the Narcotics Unit, we got help from our civilian video unit, and a lot of my coworkers back here had an instrumental role in helping clear this case, so I'd like to recognize and thank them as well. I don't have any family to introduce because my wife is working and my daughter's a freshman at UNL, and she's in school right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the Mayor's Award of Excellence for March 2021 is presented to Lisa Pachanka, a senior public safety dispatcher, and she was nominated by Lincoln resident and 10-11 anchor Bill Shamert in the category of valor for her work to help save the life of his newborn child in January of 2020. I believe Bill and his family are in the back. There we go. Pachanka was on duty when she took a call from the Shamerts, saying that their newborn baby had turned purple and was gasping for air. Pachanka asked questions about the infant and calmly guided Bill and his wife through infant CPR procedures, and after a couple of minutes, the baby started to cry, and moments later, paramedics arrived and quickly took over care. I'm sure that that was the best cry that they ever heard their child make. Bill wrote that "we were panicked and confused. We had learned CPR a few years ago before our first son was born, but forgot the steps. Without Lisa's guidance and incredibly collected presence, I'm not sure our Cameron would be alive today." I hope you will please join me in congratulating Lisa Pachanka for her heroic work and commitment to the city of Lincoln. Lisa, come on up. I'll ask AC Jackson to come back up and say a few words, and you can stand right there, and we'll ask you to speak after him.
Once again, AC Jackson, representing the Lincoln Police Department. Lisa, you represent a side of the Lincoln Police Department a lot of people don't think about or see all the time, the civilian side, and reality would say, most people have contact with the communications center long before they ever have contact with a Lincoln police officer. You set the tone, you provide the information to the officers as needed and as it comes in, and this is a perfect example of the help that's available through our staff to people in crisis. There's probably not a worse crisis you can be in is to have a child not breathing, and who do they reach out to? They reach out to you, and you did a fantastic job walking through that, and I can't see. Thank you enough, not just for the family, but for the city, but for the Lincoln Police Department. So thank you very much.
Thank you again. Thank you for nominating me. I don't even know what to say. We're trained, so I just did my job. But the parents... Bill took the call, called, he did exactly what he was supposed to do. I don't know what else I could say. It worked out great. Look at him.
All right. Lisa, is there anyone here that you wanted to introduce, or family, or no? Okay, thank you. The third and final award we're going to be announcing today is the Mayor's Award of Excellence for April 2021, and that's presented to Police Officer Robert Brenner. He was nominated by Sergeant David Munn in the category of customer relations based on a letter from nine members of the Park Middle School Administration and the entire counseling team for his work as an interim School Resource Officer, or SRO. Brenner served as Park Middle School's SRO while the regular officer was on maternity leave, and according to the letter, despite Brenner's brief time at Park, he made a lasting impression on the staff and the students and families. They wrote that Brenner worked to connect with students and staff and took extra time to build relationships with students, including those who did not have good feelings towards police officers. Park Middle School staff shared that one student, who did not initially return, the friendliness of Brenner's daily greetings gradually warmed the officer, and by winter break, even gave him a Christmas card. On a more serious matter, Brenner investigated a case of child abuse, and his personal attention to the case led the children to being safely placed with a relative. The Park Middle School letter concluded, "Officer Brenner goes above and beyond and doesn't stop until he feels students are safe." Sergeant Munn wrote in his nomination form that, quote, "Brenner's actions exemplify the mission of the LPS SRO program and the Lincoln Police Department." So I hope you'll please join me in congratulating Officer Robert Brenner for his work and commitment to the city. AC Jackson is getting his steps in today.
Assistant Chief Brian Jackson for Lincoln Police Department. Rob, we have 12 SROs, and this is an excellent example, and she's just one of many of the value of SROs in our school, building those relationships, and the fact that your school reached out to share this information, I think is just fantastic. You're a hard worker. You've worked the street. I've known you as a street officer. To know that your skills roll over many different categories, including working that closely with kids and making that difference, I think they do this day in and day out, and I think there's probably not a better feeling that you can have is to be able to touch a child or touch a teenager for the better and make the relationships between police and the community that much richer. So thank you for your work, thank you for your effort, and I appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, Mayor. I want to thank Charlotte Everts from Park Middle School for sending that letter to the chief. And I thank my family, the same with me, wife Jennifer, Caitlin, and Caleb. It was a great opportunity to work with kids. I really enjoyed it. Connecting with kids that really didn't like the police, and I was greeted daily with some not-so-friendly comments from one student, and by the end of it, they gave me a Christmas card, they were addressing me voluntarily. When I had previous contacts with them, they would shake and just did not like being around police, so that was a great opportunity, and I'm glad to be able to do it for the next four years. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much to all of you, and thank you as well to your families who support your service and make it possible. We're so grateful to you all for what you do for our community, and thank you to all who nominated, and thank you, Council, for giving us this time to honor them.
Thank you so much. You chose some really good recipients of the award, so thank you so much to LPD for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item for our council agenda for November 8th, 2021 is the notation, "Due to the Veterans Day and Thanksgiving Day holidays, City Council will not meet on Monday, November 15th and Monday, November 29th, 2021." Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any of these items for Sections 1 and 2? Is there anyone that wishes to speak on any of these items for Section 1 and 2? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is approving an agreement between the city and the state of Nebraska Department of Transportation, defining the city of Lincoln's responsibilities as a local bridge owner and complying with the national bridge inspection standards introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is approving the on-call professional services task order agreement between the city and Olson to provide preliminary engineering services for the 84th and College Park Drive traffic signal project introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1G is assessment resolution for Downtown Management Business Improvement District for Board of Equalization to be held Monday, November 22nd, 2021, at 5:30 p.m., introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1D is assessment resolution for Downtown Management Business Improvement District for Board of Equalization to be held Monday, November 22nd, 2021, at 5:30 p.m., introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1E is assessment resolution for Downtown Management Business Improvement District for Board of Equalization to be held Monday, November 22nd, 2021, at 5:30 p.m., introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1F is assessment resolution for Downtown Maintenance District for Board of Equalization to be held Monday, November 22nd, 2021, at 5:30, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1G is assessment resolution for West Haymarket Downtown Maintenance District for Board of Equalization to be held Monday, November 22nd, 2021, at 5:30, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Items 2A through 2C was introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Next up is Section 4 of Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll call item 4A, application of JDI-NNE LLC doing business as rheumatology to expand its Class I liquor license for an addition of an outdoor area approximately 90 feet by 23 feet at 7301 South 27th Street, Suite 150.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Or is the applicant here? Is applicant here?
Sorry, which one is it?
JDI-NNE, rheumatology?
Nope.
Nope. Are you Kincaid?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Anyone from Rheumatology here? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item.
Item 4B is application of Kincaid Brewing Company LLC doing business as Kincaid Brewing Company to expand its Class CK liquor license for an addition of an outdoor area approximately 24 feet by 85 feet at 201 North 7th Street.
Hey, everybody, I am Cody Schmick with Kincaid Brewing Company. We, as part of COVID relief, we came before you guys for a temporary expansion of our patio. It was a beautiful thing. It helped us out a ton, catch up from the last year, and no incidents. The people loved it down there, and so we were hoping to do it permanently. I had some conversations with several of the folks that are signing off on this, that have to sign off on this, and they're pretty much on board at this point. Just have to get local approval from you guys. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for this applicant? So is this a permanent sidewalk café?
So it's not technically a sidewalk café because it's on private property.
Dang it!
Yeah, sorry. I think that's a great thing, too, but that doesn't apply here.
So excited to have my first drink at the first sidewalk café. It's approved. It got my hopes up. All right, any other questions for this applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Chair, if it's not too much trouble, I'd like to ask investigator Parker to come forward to talk a little bit about this application.
Hi, City Council. Investigator Scott Parker, 575 South 10th Street.
Investigator Parker, thank you for coming forward. Do you have any concerns about this? During your investigation, did you see any issues that we should be aware of?
Absolutely not. Nothing.
Excellent, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
I just want to go on the record, absolutely not is what he said, all right?
Absolutely.
Put it in quotes. Yes. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, investigator. Any other questions? Anyone else here to speak on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on these items.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman?
Seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to make, move approval of items 4A and 4B.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Shob, seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. We can now move on to Section 5 of Public Hearing Resolutions. Item 5A is appeal of special assessment revolving committee recommendation regarding paving district on Humphrey Avenue from North 7th to North 10th Street.
Councilwoman Washington?
I'll hold until after staff speaks.
Don Taught, City Attorney's Office. The clerk's office received a letter last Friday from the appealing party, 1640 LLC, asking this matter to be set over until December 13th. The petitioning party for the, the recusing party for the district is the 1640 LLC, and they are engaged in some discussions with the property owner on the south side of Humphrey Avenue, which is another developer, because both of these tracks that are butted, the large tracks, are undeveloped. And so, in the interest of having further discussions between those two parties, the appealing party asks that it be set over until December 13th, so I'd ask that you do that for, set it over with continued public hearing, and perhaps in the interim, it may be resolved. So at this juncture, that's where the request is.
Councilwoman Washington?
Chairman Bowers, I would like to make that motion for delay or continuance to December 13th.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll on Councilwoman Washington's motion to delay.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on item 5A? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling items 5B and 5C together, adopting Lincoln Electric System annual budget for 2022 to become effective January 1st, 2022, and adopting Lincoln Electric System rate schedules to become effective January 1st of 2022.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none.
We need a motion, somebody. Somebody create a motion. Who was it?
I think it was Jane.
Jane.
Me? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we delay, but continue with public hearing for two weeks to November 22nd, and that's for both items 5A and 5C.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion on the motion to delay?
With public hearing.
With public hearing.
With public hearing.
Councilwoman?
Council, Council Chair Bowers, I appreciate the fact that LES is making this request on their own accord and that it's simply procedural, and since no one's come tonight to testify, perhaps there'll be people here in a couple of weeks.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. We'll move on to our Section 6, Public Hearing Ordinances, Second Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 6A is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter W by creating the classifications of diversity, equity, and inclusion manager.
Council Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. This first ordinance creates a new position, diversity, equity, inclusion manager, that was approved in the budget, so now we just set the classification parameters and the pay range.
Are there any questions for the director? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue on.
Item 6B is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range A by creating the classification of health equity initiatives coordinator.
Council, this is a new classification for the Health Department.
diversity, equity, inclusion manager, that was approved in the budget. So now we just set the classification parameters and the pay range.
Are there any questions for the Director? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue on.
Item six B is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range A by creating the classification of health equity initiatives coordinator.
Council, this is a new classification for the Health Department. The Health Equity Initiatives Coordinator is grant-funded and is a position specifically designed to be more in outreach for at-risk and underserved populations.
Any questions for the Director? Councilwoman Washington?
Director, for how long will this position be grant-funded?
I don't have that exact information. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you.
Any further questions for the Director? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue on.
Item six C is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter C, by changing the pay range of Class 5305 Energy Recovery Coordinator from C32 to C30.
Council, this change in pay range, this is a position that you had approved at a C32 a few months ago. It has sat vacant, and then upon review, the department came back with a request to reexamine and lower the pay range. We did check with the union. The union had no objections to lowering the pay range since it was vacant.
Any questions for the Director? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue on.
Item six D is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter P by creating the classification of police lieutenant.
At this point, Council, we thought we would have a pay range to attach to this, but we do not at this point in time. I'll defer to City Attorney if it can be approved without a pay range attached, or if there's other action the Council would entertain.
Don Taught, City Attorney's Office. With respect to this particular position, it was my understanding that we were either going to place it on pending or pull it from the agenda at this time. And I don't know if that's contrary to the understanding of my boss, Mr. Christie, or Director McDaniel, but that was my understanding, that we were going to, I don't know if we want to put it on pending, no date certain, or just pull it from the agenda at this point in time.
What would you all prefer?
I may, I think at this point, we could pull it from the agenda and then bring it back in the event that we're ready to bring it back before this body.
Do you, do you need a motion then to pull it from the agenda?
Correct.
Perfect.
That would be the cleanest, I think.
Are there any questions for any of the city staff at this time? Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, then I would ask for a motion to pull this from our agenda.
I'll move, I'll move to pull this from the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Beckius, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item six E is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 2.76.175 Compensation Plan Promotion, Transfer, Demotion, or Temporary Promotion to Designate a Promotion Probationary Period for Unrepresented Employees Who Are Promoted, and by adding a new section number 2.76.207 entitled Compensation Plan Disaster Response Pay to Create Disaster Response Pay Due to Employees in Classifications That Were Previously Represented by LMCEA That Have Moved to the Unrepresented W Class.
Council, two amendments to code here. The first one, 276175, sets up a probationary period for the unrepresented classified employees, so that when they go through a probation or a promotion, they actually serve a probationary period to determine their suitability for that position. It was absent, and we feel that we need to have that probationary period in there for unrepresented staff. The second amendment, 2.76.207, sets up the compensation plan and disaster response pay for W employees. Those employees, specifically battalion chiefs, were represented by LMCEA, and they have exited that union and now are unrepresented in the W class. So we need to have the mechanism within the code in which to pay them when they're out on disaster response.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
That concludes your Public Hearing Ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. We can move on to Section Seven, our Ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item seven A is repealing ordinance 20487, which created alley paving district number 51 being the east half of the alley from South 18th Street to Antelope Valley Parkway between NNO Street, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one B is change of zone 0505 for F, Application Prairie Home Builders, Inc., to amend the existing Prairie Village North planned unit development to revise layout and grading of two areas with waivers on property generally located at North 84th and Adams Street, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven C is change of zone 21040, Application of Waterford Estates LLC, Mending Construction, Inc., and Spring Valley Homes, Inc., for change from R4 Residential District to R3 Residential District on property generally located at North 104th Street and Shorefront Drive, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Choob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
He had to recuse himself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Councilman Beckius, would you go get Richard, please?
Yes, Wilb's drink.
Thanks.
Welcome back. Thank you. Good to be back.
Okay, item seven D is change of zone 08066C, Application of Assurity Real Estate Development to amend the existing Antelope Village planned unit development to add the mixed-use designation on two lots and to add density for residential development with requested waivers on property generally located north of P Street between 22nd and 23rd Street, which was introduced by Beckius.
I saw him. He got it. McGinnis moves.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded?
The second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
Thank you. It's, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend number one, which reduces the number of density of the project. As it's listed, it's from 156 units down to 128 units.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Councilwoman Raybold, would you like to open on your motion?
Yes, first of all, I do want to commend Assurity for truly coming up with a very creative and innovative project that has welcomed the cultural centers, and in particularly working with Good Neighbor Center, in coming up with a very creative way of including affordable housing in this project. And I think that is to be commended, and this is a terrific role model for other developments to look, that we on the council hope to see that does the same by including affordable housing. And certainly, we do commend you for your collaboration and cooperation and reaching out to the neighbors as well. And also, Assurity has a solid reputation of being a catalyst in our city with coming up with other innovative, creative projects, and we know that you will continue to do so. But also demonstrating that you're a good neighbor and living up to the commitments that you have made to the neighborhoods. There is no doubt that this type of affordable, this type of development with affordable housing and community partnerships is what benefits the entire city and neighborhoods, and something that really should be replicated throughout the city. And also the design elements, I really commend you for trying to come up with creative ways to make this project look like it belongs to the neighborhood. So I want to thank you for that. The site of two acres and the current density allowable is actually only 90 dwelling units. The project that is before us is asking for a waiver to increase the requested density from 90 units to 156 units, which is an increase of over 70%. And that is where the neighbors reacted to this project as being excessive. This is a diverse neighborhood wanting more affordable housing, not less. This is a neighborhood that prides itself on its inclusivity, and that shows clearly in the comments the neighbors submitted and the testimony that they provided to us during the public hearing. The one thing that I want to emphasize is the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It makes clear when we're talking about our neighborhoods. The community continues its commitment to strong, diverse neighborhoods. Neighborhoods remain one of Lincoln's great strengths, and their conservation is fundamental to this plan. The health of Lincoln's varied neighborhoods and districts depends on implementing appropriate and individualized policies. Again, the health of Lincoln's varied neighborhoods and districts depends on implementing appropriate and individualized policies. There is no doubt, change never comes easy, particularly in areas of urban infill. I just want to briefly talk about some of the comments that people submitted via email that were not publicly aired. This is one comment. This proposed development stands in the middle of an established neighborhood with its style and density that do not fit in the neighborhood or meet its needs. This project is completely overbuilt. Another individual said, "The experiment that the city, NeighborWorks, and our residents made through community building into the commitment to bettering the Malone-Hawley neighborhoods has worked," and that is part in essence to the commitment of Assurity as well. Another very wise elder, witnessed change and certainly disruption over the decades in this area, said, "Council members, as a longtime Lincoln resident, civil rights activist, and educator, I strongly encourage you to not rezone the Malone-Hawley neighborhood for an apartment complex that will have limited low-income apartments. This project doesn't meet the needs based on the city's and others' credible assessments. I encourage you to oppose this project unless they are willing to meet the low-income needs." The last comment is from Dr. Wanzar Ernst. She is a co-founder of Cultural Competence Center, and this is what she said. "This planned project, even with Ms. Raybold's amendment, will bring a minimum of 160 people into a single block of our neighborhood. People who don't plan to put down roots, people who don't care about the impact they leave behind. If that remotely gives you pause, and it should, do not approve the zoning change. At least give some time to do impact studies. How many cars drive down P and Q Streets now? What is the current noise level of the cars, trucks, buses, fire engines? What is the anticipated impact of the traffic of adding 160 people to a single block, do you know? I understand the concerns about losing the affordable apartment units with reduction in size, but this is not a single-issue problem. The impact to a larger group of marginalized neighbors will cause much more harm than losing two, three, or even six apartments that aren't even built yet in a project that does not promise to be very welcoming to people who couldn't otherwise afford underground parking and a swimming pool. I have lived in Lincoln for all but three years of my life. I've rented apartments or owned homes in every corner of the city. Most recently, I moved from the country club where I owned a home. After my divorce, I know what a wide variety of neighborhoods offer or don't offer. I know how different neighborhoods are treated by city services. That bit is rather shocking, truth be told. The Malone-Hawley neighborhood is vibrant, diverse, full of energy and history. It is a neighborhood that has been reclaimed by the homeowners who love it much more than I do because they have history here. People are welcome to embrace this attitude. 160 renters will come and go, and come and go, and leave behind what? Does the city even know or even anticipate what the impact will be? If it's devastating to us, will anyone care?" So bottom line, I introduce this after listening to a number of concerns from the neighbors, and I think everyone on the dais has worked on behalf of neighborhoods and neighborhood concerns in one capacity or another. And so I encourage my colleagues to please support this reduction of density.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. I have looked at this project very carefully for the last few weeks, and I have heard what the neighbors have had to say. They've raised issues around parking and traffic, height, density, affordable housing, and really changes to the nature of their neighborhood. And I have visited for a lengthy period of time with Assurity and its project manager, and they have come before us to ask for a few things. And I won't go into every, I won't go into a long list, but they, they come before us to ask for an alley vacation, waivers for height, setbacks, internal uses, exchanging mixed use, increasing mixed use, lowering neighborhood business area within the PUD, and most importantly for this conversation, a waiver on density. I hear what the neighbors have to say about the change in nature of the neighborhood and their concerns. I'm not as concerned about parking. Assurity, I'm not concerned at all about parking. Assurity has met the PUD requirements of, and actually better than the requirement, the requirement is a one-to-one on parking, and so I don't see parking as the issue. It may not be what folks are used to, but I can't change the rules on someone halfway through the process, or more than halfway through the process. They signed this PUD almost 15 years ago at one-to-one. They've met it. I'm not concerned about parking. A five-foot height increase, that doesn't bother me, and the setbacks don't bother me either, primarily because the right-of-way of both P and Q are so wide, and the distance between the street and the sidewalk is so wide that reducing the setbacks, I don't believe, will have a negative impact on the neighborhood. But the density issue is still the primary issue here, and it's the, changing the nature of the community. This area was zoned R6 before the PUD was put into place, and I'm more concerned that the folks who live in the neighborhood and who are, who are, have concerns about the density may not understand that R6 would have done just about the same thing. A higher building, a much greater density than what the neighborhood is used to. And so I understand, as Councilwoman Raybold has said, change is very hard, and it's not easy for the neighborhood residents. But I also am aware that we are looking at, we are trying very hard to keep neighborhoods intact and strong, and trying to get new developments to ease into neighborhoods, maintaining as much as possible the same qualities that we have right now. This is a changing area, and there are, there is going to be greater density than what there is today, and I know that greater density would be there at 90 units, would they, if the project were reduced to 90, which no one's asking for, or at 128, or at 156. So really, it's the amount of density. This is incredibly, this is a challenge, because I am a huge supporter for affordable housing. And if I thought that this was going to negatively impact the Good Neighborhood Corporation, I would not be able to support this. But I have been assured that the grant is stable and in place, and that Good Neighbor will continue to get the grant, and they'll be able to continue to receive the administrative fees that they have gone into this project, knowing that they would receive. So I know it's not going to dismantle their plans, but it still is, until the moment that I place a vote, I'm just, I am really just talking it out, because I want people to understand that this is a hard issue and that I have done a lot of thinking about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilone. Any other comments? You know, I was trying to get into my notes, but my computer isn't opening, so I'm just going to speak from the heart then. You know, strong leadership sometimes means taking a stance or taking a vote that sometimes even our closest friends don't agree with because it's the right thing to do. And I will not be supportive of Councilwoman Raybold's amendment, which I know will probably make some of my friends upset and make them frustrated with me, but I have to be able to sleep at the end of the, I have to be able to go to bed at the end of the night and look myself in the mirror. We need 17,000 market rate units in the next 10, 10 years, and we do need an increase in affordable housing units. Part of our comprehensive plan and part of our affordable housing plan includes infill development. And I appreciate the communication that has been coming in, but it hasn't only been people that are in opposition. We've had people that have been strong supporters of this project that have been writing in. The cultural centers were part of this project. They were part of planning it. They were, they're a partner in bringing this to our community, and I don't think that it's appropriate at the last minute for us to change the direction that the cultural centers are advocating and supportive of. This is something that people in the neighborhood are saying that, both, on both sides of this, that they are for it and that they are against it. And I hope that we'll be able to come to a resolution on this. I hope that we'll be able to come to an agreement, and even if we won't be able to agree with the stance that, or the, my position that I'm going to take on this, I hope that we can at least respect that all sides were heard on this, both those in support and those in opposition. Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also feel compelled to say a few words. I shared this district with Councilwoman Bowers, so I too want to thank Assurity for reaching out and talking to me and my colleagues before the public hearing, as did the neighbors. It's, I've supported the project from the beginning. That has not changed throughout the deliberation process. But, but what I want to say is, when I voted for the city's affordable housing plan, what I did was commit to helping us to get to these goals, and this project helps us get there. As others have quoted, the number of housing units we need to get, this project clearly gets us there. And I'd be remiss not to thank Urban Development for bringing this project forward. I know they're working hard to, with our partners in the city, to get us there. But I do want the neighbors to understand and hear when I say, I get it. You know, I serve on the board of NeighborWorks Lincoln, and I'm proud to serve on that board. I've watched those projects. They've done a lot for affordable housing in Lincoln, and I know they'll continue to do a lot to help us create the affordable housing that we need. But what I also want to say, and I love the quote from my colleague, Councilwoman Choob, but he's, he says it a lot, and he's said it from this dais, but just because in this case, if, if I don't agree with the neighbors, that doesn't mean that we're not hearing, hearing you, that we're not listening. We do hear you. Sometimes we just disagree on how to get there, and this may be one of those instances. So, thank you, Councilwoman Choob, for always reminding me of that, because I think it's important for us all to understand that. The cultural centers are another great organization in our community, that I'm so grateful that they're partnering with Assurity. There are many There are many organizations in this city that can help us get to our goals, and the cultural centers are just one of them, along with NeighborWorks Lincoln and others, and other corporations like Assurity, who others have mentioned, you have done so much for our community and our city, especially in terms of, of housing. I do empathize with the neighbors. I get it. I've been a neighborhood president over the years. I have taken issue with the city as well, and, and not always once, so I do understand that frustration, but that doesn't mean that we're not listening. It doesn't mean that we won't always agree. So, for these reasons and others, I won't be supporting the amendment to decrease the density on this project. Does not help us move forward on the goals that we have committed to do as a council on affordable housing. And the last thing I'll mention is, and not just affordable housing, but marketplace housing as well. And so, that's my commitment as a councilperson that voted to help us get there, and I'm going to be true to that vote that I made and that commitment, and keep in mind, the Planning Commission also voted unanimously for this project as well. So, for all of these reasons, I will not be supporting the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Councilwoman Raybold.
Yes, I just wanted some closing remarks.
Turn.
First of all, I do want to thank my colleagues. I really appreciate your comments, and I know that our goals are the same, that we care deeply about creating affordable housing and additional housing in our city. And of course, we care deeply about all the cultural centers, and this is a wonderful conduit, this grant, that is, can be made available, working with the Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I think it is a fantastic grant. But I just want to assure everyone out there that the grant that was applied for, accepted, and awarded for this project was submitted with 128 units, with a guarantee of 10 units being for affordable housing, and, which I think is a fantastic model, and it's exciting to see that. And I know that Assurity is committed to doing the 10 affordable housing units. When they acquired that corner lot, then they bumped up the density, and, but they also bumped up their commitment, which I really commend them for, of creating 15 affordable housing units. They're affordable housing units for 10 years, and that is, is fundamental, and it does help so many in our community. I know that we've looked and approved other projects where we have increased the density of those units, and I can think of one is the Wayuka Project, the Gate House Project, where it has 98 units of affordable housing, 100% are affordable housing, whereas the Assurity Project is 90% market rate and 10% affordable housing. The Gate House Project has 98 units, 100% are affordable and for 30 years. And so, for that reason, you know, we look at these projects on a one-by-one basis, and sometimes we make the tough decisions, but I just, I just want to say, thank you very much. We can all agree, again, that change is difficult, no matter what the circumstances are. When we, as councilpeople, deal with neighborhoods and established neighborhoods, it is very obvious. Every single one of my colleagues has worked their hardest to reach out and hear our neighbors and make sure that we can try to find solutions and compromises that will keep development moving forward, but certainly make the neighbors more comfortable with this development project. And I want to commend them, because sometimes coming up with solutions and compromises are never easy, but I am hopeful that going forward, if, if my colleagues support this, that Assurity will continue to have their commitment of 10% of the number of units, make sure that they're affordable, because we're all committed to doing that. I know we've talked about high restrictions, design improvements, bigger setbacks, more screening, more landscaping, and yes, even the density. These are the things that we're going to continue to deal with on a probably weekly basis, and those are the things that we have to work together on and come up with the right solutions for each and every one of them. And again, I just think we need to be mindful, the health of Lincoln's varied neighborhoods and districts depends on implementing appropriate and individualized policies. This is one of those situations I ask for your support for this reduction in this density on behalf of the neighborhood. Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington? Ward?
No.
Schob?
No.
McGuinness?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Motion lost, 42.
Let me get Tom.
We got a motion.
We got a motion.
Go back to the main motion. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Councilman Schob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Raybold, thank you very much for your work. We talked about this a little bit over the last few days, and as you stated, we've got lots of emails from lots of people, and it was tough. It's, I do feel passionate about listening to residents of our community. I thank Councilwoman Ward for giving me a shout-out for saying, "We're listening," and our job is to listen and follow the rules that we've got in front of us by the Planning Department and by our comprehensive plan, and then also consider our Affordable Housing Action Plan and consider the needs of the neighbors, and we have to advocate for every one of the 300,000 residents in our community and build a city that needs 17,000 housing units in the next 10 years, 5,000 affordable units in the next 10 years, which means this infill property is just an example of what we're going to see over and over again over the next few years. It's going to be challenging. It's going to be times when we make great compromises and times when we make small compromises. But in order for our growing city to continue to grow, we have to make sure there's housing available for all those wonderful people that want to live here. Now, I've, it hurts that I couldn't give my friends and neighbors in that neighborhood exactly what they want, but the developer came to the table and gave some compromises by changing the location of the entry and trying to do things, and I'm sure that they will be a good neighbor, and I feel passionate that it will work out well. But I'm going to support this motion, and I'm going to stop talking now.
Well said. Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Chairman. Even though I voted to reduce density to 128, I am going to vote in support of this project. Assurity has been good for Lincoln in many ways. They have been an anchor, a wonderful anchor for the Antelope Valley Project in general. They're a responsible developer, and they have been a champion of many civic, civic activities here in Lincoln. They have also agreed to work diligently on traffic and safety. They have provided a lot of parking solutions, which I think are going to be helpful in the long run to the neighborhood, and I appreciate their willingness to discuss ways in which to continue to keep the project going forward with greater safety, or at least the concerns of the residents in mind. I will be watching this project and to make certain that all of those things are put into place, as well as their agreement to work on bike lanes and all the other amenities. So, for that reason, I can support this project and really hope that when it comes to pass, that the neighbors who live in that neighborhood today will not wake up disappointed that the project is there, that they'll be able to wake up and realize that the project isn't that bad. And I appreciate the fact that these 152 units are going to help us in our market rates and give us, help us bump up and meet the need of 17,000 additional units, and I'm cognizant of the fact that 10 years of affordable housing is 10 years more than we have right now in this area, but it will last for 10 years, and we will still need to be creative and assertive in making certain we have affordable housing that lasts forever. Thank you.
Any further comments? Councilwoman Raybold.
Just one last comment. I can't support the project, even though I think the world of the work that Assurity has done. When I look at this project of 152 units on two acres and compare it to some other projects like the Gate House, which is 98 units on eight acres, you know that that is a better match for the neighborhood, even though we, we all struggled with that one as well, and the neighbors had grave concerns about the Gate House. So, for that reason, I really feel that we need to listen to the neighborhoods more and work our hardest to find appropriate compromises, to make sure that it is a wonderful neighbor to the existing neighbors. So, for that reason, I will vote no.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Raybold?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-1.
5.
Excuse me, 5-1.
7-8.
Do we need to call?
We have one more item.
We have one more item on Assurity.
7E, Street and Alley Vacation 21006, Application of Assurity Real Estate Development to vacate the entire east-west alley between P and Q Street from N, from North 22nd Street to North 23rd Street, introduced by Beckius.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Schob, seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0.
Okay, move on. Passed.
Item 7F is approving the lease agreement between City of Lincoln and St. James United Methodist Church for the lease of office space by aging partners for its senior center program at 2400 South 11th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, for a term of one year from September 1st, 2021, to August 31st, 2022, introduced by Beckius.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Item 7G is approving the lease agreement between City of Lincoln and AL Irrigation for the lease of office space by aging partners for its personal and family services program at 137th Street, 8th Street, Geneva, Nebraska, for a term of one year from August 1st, 2021, through July 31st, 2022, introduced by Beckius. So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Senior Services.
Item 7H is approving a supplement to sublease agreement for a five-year term with the option of three additional five-year terms between the city on behalf of aging partners in Victory Park LLC for property generally located at 600 South 70th Street, introduced by Beckius.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Five-year term on this.
Item 7I is approving the atrium building redevelopment agreement between Atrium Building LLC and the city relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 1200 N Street, introduced by Beckius.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7J, amending the fiscal year 2021-22 CIP to authorize an appropriate $3,651,017 in TIF funds to the atrium building redevelopment project, introduced by Beckius.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 7K is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the atrium building redevelopment project in an amount not to exceed $3,651,017, introduced by Beckius.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Our resolutions, first readings are items 8A through 8G. Our ordinances, first reading and related resolutions are items 9A through 9C, and our pending list is items 10A.
And today is an open microphone session, so anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak, regardless of the number of topics, while the council listens. For the month of November, open microphone sessions are today, and then also on November 22nd. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council at this time? Just want to start off with your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Joshua Mueller. I live at 151 South 90th Street, Apartment 301. I'm a member of Rank the Vote Nebraska, which is a nonpartisan organization advocating for the adoption of ranked choice voting across our state. I'm here today to advocate for its use in Lincoln City elections. I think that all or most of you are aware of what ranked choice voting is, but in case you're not, it is an alternative voting method where instead of limiting voter's choice to a single candidate or a block of candidates, they instead rank the candidates in their order of preferences. These rankings are then used to eliminate the least popular candidates and transfer the votes from eliminated candidates to those still remaining, until eventually a winner or set of winners is elected that represent the true preference of the electorate. Ranked choice voting allows voters to vote for their actually preferred candidate without fear of the spoiler effect. It also moderates campaigns, as candidates have to appeal to all voters to try and earn the votes that might be transferred due to them being a second, third, or later choice after eliminated candidates. They can't solely focus on mudslinging and demonizing their opponents. In the end, it is a better method for electing representatives that truly represent the people. It also has the potential to eliminate the need for primary elections, which could be a cost-cutting method for the city and council and county if it were passed. To date, it is used statewide in Maine and Alaska. It is also used in over 50 city elections, from New York City to Salt Lake City. I'm here today mostly to make you aware of our efforts and to ask for your support going forward. It is my understanding that the city council doesn't actually have the ability on its own to pass a resolution to use ranked choice voting or to refer a charter amendment that would be voted on as used either. However, we would appreciate any support and hope that if an amendment was referred to you, that you would be willing to approve for it to go before the voters in Lincoln. We're currently trying to work with officials across the city, county, and state to figure out all of the particulars necessary to implement ranked choice voting, and I would hope that you would all see the benefit of it and would make its implementation easier. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Raybold?
Thank you, Josh, for coming down to speak about this. Do you know of any other municipality in the Midwest, like in Nebraska, Iowa, Kansas, Missouri, South Dakota, that uses ranked choice?
The closest examples I know of are Minneapolis. There's several cities in Colorado that have recently adopted it, and like I mentioned, Utah has a large number of municipalities that have adopted it.
And when the municipalities count the votes, does it take any longer than other systems that have been in place for a while?
I don't have the data on that, but there's no reason to expect that it should. Everything is done electronically today. There are, the voting tabulators are programmed to tabulate ranked choice ballots, and you then just feed those results to a machine. LB 125 is a state proposal from Senator Macaulay to adopt RCV for some statewide elections, and from their analysis, we know that the tabulators that is used, are used across the state are the same as what's used in Maine, and we know that they have the ability to process ranked choice ballots.
Terrific. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thanks so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Roy Helm, 2750 South 13th Street, which is on Oto and Pawnee land. Thursday, the 11th, we'll be recognizing the Veterans' Day, which is the, the day formerly known as Armistice Day, which was marking the end of the war to end all wars. And I, I think it's important to not lose sight of that. I, I don't have, I'm not speaking ill of veterans. I, I think we need to recognize veterans, but I also think we need to be cognizant of the fact that because of our country's actions, we're creating far too many veterans. And we, we need to think very hard and very deep about what our, our country stands for and what it means. And it, it's not just our veterans that, that need to be recognized. We, we have many in government service that should also be recognized. And not everybody has to put their life on the line to be a hero, to be serving their country. And I, I hope we can not just think about veterans, but think about peace, and, and think about what that really means. And it, it's so very unfortunate that, you know, we, we created a day to recognize the end of a horrific war, and we saw, seen so many more wars and, and since then, that it's almost meaningless to think about the First World War. But again, I'm, you know, I'm very thankful. I'm appreciative of the fact that we are able to gather like this. I appreciate the work that you're all doing, the tough decisions that you're making, and, you know, unfortunately, the Cornhuskers aren't that successful in football, but go Big Red. And thank you very much.
So much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, Councilwoman McGinnis.
Seeing no one else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at this time.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?